Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good, thank you.
How are you? Don't be intimidated. It's a team here on the other side.
I hear it does. The lights and stuff down there.
So what you have for is the council.
Yeah.
I'm Greg Unz, I'm the mayor. And we want to get to know you a little bit better. And it's good that we have everybody involved. You know, but you'll be working with us to hire on. So we want to give a chance to know a little bit more about you. Have you expressed your history and past? And where you're coming from and things like that. Let me go around the table, have everybody introduce themselves. Lloyd Johnson, council member.
What's your name, councilor?
Hey, Greg Unz.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Nice to meet you. I bet you're...
So let me get charged here. And tell us what interests you about the position in Montrose. And highlight your key qualifications that make you the best person for this job.
What interests me, it's somewhere size city to where I work now. It's similar job description. It's a new challenge. And qualifications, I've had election experience with planning and zoning. I've done some budgeting, not as much as what's in your job description maybe. I've done payroll, but maybe not so much the HR side. But I'm certainly willing to learn what you have here. If they... It's right in there, my little notebook's stuck down. I have eight years' experience in city government. Before that, I was an election judge for Rockford Township. One of the things too that's similar is Rockford has the Rockford Township around it. Although I didn't do a lot with the annexations. I'm kind of familiar with some of the process of annexing and moving forward with the process. I certainly need help with it, but I have been familiar to that. I've done minutes. I've attended council meetings. I've done packets. I've done parking rec, planning and zoning, city council. And I've put HR packets together. And we actually just switched over to an EDA. So it's not something I've had a lot of involvement with, but I've attended the meetings. Joanne, what's your opinion?
How long have you been in that category?
I've been in city government eight years.
What's the capacity you're running?
We're going 4,400. Just a little larger.
Could you describe your supervisory management style?
I haven't had to supervise a lot of people. I am the fill-in when the administrator's gone. I don't have a style because I have... I'm certainly willing to learn and work with the staff and find out what works.
Can you describe a situation where you addressed an employee's performance issue? And what that outcome was?
I really, since I'm not responsible for any employees other than on a fill-in basis, I really don't know that I could give you a fair answer on that.
But on this job, you would be a supervisor.
That's what I understand. And I understand it's just one employee.
Yeah, so I think you could handle it.
I would like to think I could.
Lloyd, next question.
Describe how you believe the relationship between the city clerk treasurer and city council should function.
It's a team. I would be working for the city, so you are the employer. So I would like to think we'd work together. If there's issues, you would come to me and let me know what needs to be changed or how we would want to handle the situation.
So how would you describe your ability to make things happen? And what could you do to improve upon that?
Did you mean like a specific project or...?
Sure.
I guess I would work with the, find out what the council, if it's something directed from the council, find out what you're looking for. If it involves working with the staff, get their input, especially since they're more familiar with the city right now than I would be. Get their input and work together and get a list of what needs to be done and move forward with it. Set timelines and make sure it fits with what the council's looking for too.
Should you hire you in the position? Explain how you would involve or become involved in the Montrose community.
I'm not sure yet. Where I'm at now, I organize like movie in the park. So I come after hours, even though I'm hourly. And I help set up and organize movie in the park. I try participate in our Riverdais event. And the parades and things when I am in town. Where I'm at right now, I do an email blast. So I get the information out to people. So maybe if I'm not even there participating, I'm letting people know about the events.
How did you get the movie in the park? How do you...
We're members of the Right Sherwood Cable Commission. And I was hoping you guys were too. And I looked and you guys weren't members.
We've been trying to do...
Okay.
Get the movie in the park going. How do you maintain positive relationships with the citizens, the businesses, and the staff when delivering unpopular news?
Unfortunately, if it's unpopular news, you still have to share it. And you move forward. You hope that they're not ready for delivering the message. And just keep maintaining the relationship if it somehow goes, get wounded during the news.
Can you describe a particularly difficult situation where you had to use some sort of negotiation skills to reach a resolution?
A difficult situation, I had to get to a negotiation. And I tried to think of maybe a story that I shared with, when I met with the staff earlier today. We had, I don't know if it's so much a negotiation as a solution so much, but we had a contractor in town who hit a line and it backed up into like seven private homes. And between, and the administrator was out of the office that week. And the public works director was on medical leave. And so between talking with our consultants and staff, notifying the residents of what happened. And then I was saying I had gone to a ribbon cutting. And when I came back, the bar across the street caught on fire. So it was...
It's a good weekend.
Interesting Thursday. Joanne happened to be there, but we had to evacuate City Hall because the smoke was so bad. And we had to work with the fire departments. And getting them ice and, I wasn't part of clearing out the streets, but just communication. I know it's not quite so much a negotiation, but just a situation that we handled. And then after that, we had to take letters out to those that had the homes that backed up afterwards too, just to let them know if their house was unsafe, that they could go spend the night somewhere. So it's not so much a negotiation, it's just dealing with the situation. And we just dealt with one thing at a time.
Please describe your involvement in the budgeting and financial process of your city.
I have a, I would do a smaller portion. I was never responsible for the whole budget. I did something like the council and mayor trainees at times. Each year it seemed to kind of vary out who did what portions of it. I did planning and zoning, elections, the recycling. And then other staff were directed to do the other portions of the budget. If they, somebody did the utilities or the council cable did, she would get all those codes and public works would get their prices. So that's more what I did was just specific parts of the budgeting.
Do you have any experience with long-range planning?
Other than what I've observed, I have not had to plan it myself, no.
Would you help with the research and stuff?
Some, you know, when we had Joanne, I would come in and then our administrator. And I would sit in with developers. And not so much negotiate, but be part of the conversation and look up information for what they would need on what was allowed, what wasn't allowed. Those type of situations.
Do you currently have a CIP and a comprehensive plan in place?
Our city does. But I have not had to do any of the gathering for that. And also capital improvement plan and, and with the long-range planning. I know that there's a lot into it, I would assume. Part of that is, I think Joanne said Wendy was kind of the finance gal at the office.
Please describe how you would facilitate and implement a council vision for the community.
If it was a project that you wanted, I would definitely find out what everybody wanted, what the priorities were. Sometimes you would maybe do a workshop and everybody come together with their ideas. And then between the group, we'd facilitate and decide what was the priorities within, what we came up with. And then I assume we'd work with the staff and consultants if needed and make a list of deadlines and move forward with the project and keep checking in on it.
Please describe the role of technologies such as social media, websites, online paintings, that type of thing. And how that plays into delivering city services or city businesses.
Sure.
Lloyd, I have to say, your website's very nice. I've been on it and whoever maintains it and designed it did a very good job. I think you provide a lot of good information. I don't know if you have a Facebook page? I don't recall seeing one. Okay, there is one. I have done, I do the maintenance of our webpage and our Facebook page at our city hall. And it's flushing hydrants and a found dog or, you know, there's certain things that people want to know about and they want help with that. One other thing that I started there is I do an email blast. So I take upcoming events and send it out to anybody that wants to participate. Blind carbon copy and send that out. And it could be a hundred-year celebration, the upcoming Montrose days. It's hydrant flushing, just upcoming events.
How do you see that those technologies play into the ideal? Our largest piece of our demographic is one, how do you see that?
Well, that's how they're looking at their information. You know, it is the quick and easy. They want to know now. And same with, you kind of talked about automatic payments and things. You know, and I'm a little older generation of writing out checks. And I've just gotten used to the auto pay and changing over myself. So I'm sure it's everybody suggesting.
Describe how you would build a trust with the city council and the staff.
I would start by getting to know everybody. I think sometimes it helps to know a little personal information about each person. Share some things about myself. Maybe learn everybody's style, how they like to work, how you like to communicate. If your public works, if they prefer to receive text messages or emails or phone calls, it's learning what everybody's style is. And same with the council.
What do you think are the biggest challenges that our city, City of Montrose faces? And how would you address them?
Lloyd, I see you have a lot of development going on or started development. I've seen some stuff that's right on 12 that looks really neat with the old buildings. You have some older buildings that look like they could be redeveloped. You've got a lot of land around you. You've got a lot of room to grow in the community here with the township. You've got a highway through here. You've got a railroad, a train through here. You have lots of challenges. Lots of good things, lots of growth and opportunity.
How would you address them?
How would I address them? Part of it is, I assume you kind of work with Joanne and trying to find people that want to come to your community. And when they do come, be welcoming. Find what, not always can something work on a lot or an area. If not, maybe find somewhere else within your city that it will work. If not, maybe it's annexes to grow and can take on that project.
Describe your experience in dealing with labor negotiations. They probably don't have a union.
I don't have any experience. I just, I've never had to, my husband's a union employee, but I've never had to negotiate.
Have you ever had any experience of dealing with negotiations, other issues, business issues or development issues, those types of things?
I really didn't have the authority to do that. A lot of times I would take the information. There would be times when the administrator wasn't around and developer would come in and I would get all the information of what they were proposing. And then we'd go back and, and sometimes between Joanne and or Nancy and Dan, because I've had two different administrators. And then we'd go back and work with that developer.
Describe your experience with economic development.
I don't know if you're referring to like developers coming in?
Like whether it's businesses or homes or just any kind of development that would benefit the city?
Kind of what I was just talking about a little bit with developers who come in. It might be somebody coming to build a commercial building. It might be somebody coming to build residential homes. I have sat down and been part of the conversation, not a decision maker. I can't say I've had the lead role on it, but I've been a participant in it. It's exciting. It's always disappointing when something doesn't quite come through, but it's fun to be part of the conversation.
Yeah, I'm sure you've got some input that, you know, that's good. The more heads you get together sometimes, the better it is.
Yeah, make up the different ideas. That lot doesn't work, maybe this one over here. Or maybe we make it a little smaller or a little bigger.
Describe a situation that you feel demonstrates your integrity or your ethical standards.
That's hard. I do a good job. I show up. I'm a participant in our clerks organization. I'm actually a vice president of Region Six. There's a Region Four, but there's six regions. I oversee 11 counties. There's codes and ethics we need to follow to be a member of that. I don't know what else to say on that one. Tough one for me.
Has there ever been a time where you needed to show your assertiveness? Where you needed to overcome someone else's will with your will? Can you tell me about that?
As in, I felt one way and somebody felt another way?
Either way was the right. Forsaken, aren't you?
Sure. We had a developer that wanted to come in and have less setbacks. And it had already gone through the, I want to say a planning and development process. And they were allowed to be 15 feet apart. And you're supposed to stay five feet within your PID. And there was a disagreement on, because we couldn't find it in writing, but you could see on the map and it made sense that it looked like it was 15 feet between the units. And we went back and forth. And ultimately, the planner came back and said, yeah, it is 15 feet. But we just both kind of stated our opinion. And it was ultimately that when we waited for the planner to settle the disagreement.
You did back down really easily.
I did, because I was pretty confident on it. I wish I could find it in the resolution for the PID or the, and I don't remember if it was a conditional use permit or if it was a CUP, but it didn't have the language. But I could tell looking at the site.
Do you have anything to do, maybe to change the language to make it better?
Not at that point, because it was done so long ago. It was a pre-existing condition and it was an interpretation at that point. And now that just went through planning and zoning, then it might be closer.
On your planning and zoning committee, do they have schooling? Are they just people off the street that don't know a lot sometimes?
No, we do a little bit of a screening process. We take applicants and then we have them fill out a questionnaire. They come in and meet our planning and zoning commission. And typically, they would make a recommendation to the council. And then every couple of years, we have our consultants come in. So our planner will come in and do like a little planning and zoning one-on-one. We have a, and then we also did an online class for them.
Can I give any questions for us?
I, you know, something I kind of said when I met with the staff. I was, I know it used to be an administrator clerk treasurer position. And I was just wondering what was removed from the job that is, because it reads a lot like an administrator position. And I believe I was, it was, someone explained that the public works are now overseen by the public works director or supervisor. Is that the only change that you did in the job description?
We became more of a departmentalized, so we have the public works in it and so that they're more pillar-driven. So you've got the fire department as a pillar, the public works as a pillar, the administrator as a pillar. And before, the administrator had control over all of that. We've gotten controls, so there's more communication between those department heads and the council as opposed to all funding through the administrator. Now, that may change down the road as our demographic changes, as our city grows, those kinds of things. Then we look and reevaluate whether that's an administrative position or whether the clerk treasurer position is sufficient to fulfill that need. And what we looked at is that the clerk treasurer right now fits that better than does an administrative position. But I wouldn't hold you from doing a book or, you know, because that site could always be there, always be possible, you know, if you do an exceptional job.
Lloyd, that would be nice too. I, that wasn't the role I was looking for. It was, that's, I was hesitant in applying just because it was the treasurer's side of it was a little more than what I was used to doing. I'm certainly willing to learn. And then the fire department, is that a volunteer fire department?
It is.
Okay. And the administrator overshot the volunteer fire department at one point?
The administrator would have the oversight over the fire department itself as far as the spending and everything. But there is a volunteer fireman's relief that handles the actual administration of the fire department itself. So it's kind of a fold.
The other question I had is, it looked like you looked at hiring internally. Is there a reason why you decided to go externally?
There was a desire both on the council and the community to look at all candidates from all possible places as well. And also, we looked at that and the person we had as a candidate didn't want to move to that position. I had that, so we decided not to move.
Okay. That was, I kind of looked through the minutes and I didn't quite see the resolution to why that didn't move forward.
I think that's all I have at the moment. Do you have anything else for me?
Anyone have anything for me? Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much. That way. Appreciate it. I forgot to add, for the visitors.
I'm tired of traffic. We're low on tech.
Of the city, I guess. Thank you. Appreciate you having me.
Sorry, I just coughed.
I coughed in there, but thank you. Yes, it's very chill. Thank you. Thank you. I'm free.
She said, oh, she said. That's what we'll discuss.
Do you want to take a couple of minutes? A couple of minutes, we can take a break too, stretch your legs if you want to.
Okay.
Do we need to quantify our things on the one through?
No, we only have to do that on the, on the rating, the final rating of itself. Not on each individual question.
Just let me know when you're ready to start because I'll turn this back off. When you're ready, I'll give you a minute to set the show. See, I just did that.
Is there?
And when is the, are you going to, imagine?
No.
That's this week. What are the dates? The twenty eighth night at six thirty. I think that was just, is that true? Actually, we have some. And then that's how, six. Very, so literally I wanted, unless.
I think so. Everybody ready? Yeah, get away from him.
All right.
All right. Well, so you've been through the interview process now here today. You also have had an opportunity to review all the application materials, background information, reference information, et cetera. At this point, I, my, my preference as far as how to proceed is to, what, what seems to work best is to go around the table and see who your top ranked person is. That can help aid in the discussion about other folks. Sometimes it's across the board. Everybody has the same makes the decision-making process relatively easy. So that's my preference as far as how to, how to start is just to have each of you indicate who you're. At this point, all I really need is who your top person is. And I, I won't make the decision about where you start then.
I'll start, no problem. My top rank was Maggie.
Is that all you want us to say? Is who it is and why?
Presently, yeah, just give me the name.
Okay.
Yep, we'll get into more detail.
I'll wait.
I said I'm conflicted.
Oh. Kind of be two, not three of them. I kind of have it narrowed it down to two, but I think it's, it comes down more to if each of them are good in one, one area, but not necessarily another area. So, you know, what area is, do we want them to be strong in? Or what area are they, would be easiest for us to work with them? Do you know what I mean? Like.
It's always, it's always the dilemma at the end of the process. Everybody goes, I'd like to take this piece of this person.
Yeah. And mold them all together.
Exactly, exactly. That's always the, that's always the way it goes. Rarely is there being perfect.
Yeah.
Rarely.
I also liked Maggie, followed by Audra.
I didn't. I'm, I don't know.
Who were you talking to?
Probably Audra and Lori.
All right, well, you're not going to make this easy, are you?
No.
All right, Jill, or Jill, I got your.
You got it.
Michelle.
This is tough. I would have to go Maggie as well.
Okay. So let's just, now, now let's talk about it. So what, what you have, three of you indicated that Maggie was your number, your number one candidate. Two of you indicated that Audra slash Lori, if, I just, you said Audra first, so that's what I wrote first. So any comments from Lloyd and Melissa regarding Maggie?
Yeah, she's, what we need is somebody a little bit more forceful, I think. She might be, you know, well-educated and stuff like that, but she don't have the experience. And seems to me she'd be wrote over kind of easily. And that's why I, really truly all three of them aren't what I would choose, but.
That was somewhat my concern. I mean, she did give some examples on dealing with people where, you know, she, she seems to be very good at diffusing the situation. I think what, what got me maybe is not only that, but, I mean, her resume and all of her stuff in here were wonderful. Her interview was maybe not the best, but that's, I mean, I'm not counting her out in any way. I would be very happy with her too. So I think, yeah, I think the, yeah, I mean.
Concern about delivery.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, she, and I, but I was very glad that she did give specific situations where she has, you know, diffuse situations of where she has, you know, shown that she's not, she's going to let someone overcome her.
Any response from the three of you regarding that particular topic? Kind of the ability to handle difficult challenging situations? Because I'm sure that's something you've reflected on yourselves.
To me, she, I, I agree with you guys. She seems to be kind of timid and, you know, hasn't had that chance to be very assertive. So that is a concern, but everything else I kind of liked because she's, she's really born, get out in the community. You know, all of that aspect.
So it, it didn't concern you to the point, obviously, where you'd say, not, not my favorite candidate. You, okay, okay?
Yeah.
There were other things that outweighed that.
Yeah, because, I mean, she gave the assertiveness as to what she would do, that she wouldn't step, you know, she would hold her ground.
Well, I, I also agree where they come from with that, but one of the reference checks when you, when you wrote kind of the key points in those is that she's becoming more assertive and direct, meaning she's growing into that. So it's, once you get that confidence, I don't think she'll have an issue.
Yeah.
And just like anybody, interviews are difficult, you know, how to.
Oh, yeah, no.
Very, especially since.
That's right. Group's going to go, it's tough. This is a tough spot.
It's intimidating.
Yes.
There's no doubt.
I really liked the fact that she had done her homework.
Yes.
You know, that was really good. She had gone ahead and checked into what we've got out there, where we're at. Granted, it was dated, but she, she took the time.
But she did with what she had available to her.
And, and she was able to speak to those topics as well.
Yep.
I love the fact that she's communication driven, that she does now weekly update. I mean, that's a huge piece on the communication side of it. And I thought that she, she may not have the best experience as far as background, but I think that she is growing into that and maybe someone that had, is here for the long haul with us as well. That's why, you know, that, that's a good fit. The other piece that I liked was the fact that she's able to relate to the millennial style of how I want my information as well. And that's one of the reasons I questioned it because we have such a large demographic that expects that information now. We need to be able to buy that as well.
Somebody told me today that your average age is twenty-nine.
Yeah.
That certainly reflects sixty or seventy.
Sixty or seven, sixty-five percent are twenty-seven through thirty-seven.
And that's, and that's amazing. That's a lot of communities.
Yeah, twenty-eight. The great majority of our podcast is that millennial piece of the copy. And that's an important piece that we need to address. It's a very simple.
Well, and I think too, that I think she would stick around for a long time. You know, assuming she's not, you know.
No, I put one here too, and I, I punched out loyalty. That's one of the things with the last part when she asked her how much time to need. And she was like, I want to make sure they're in a good place.
Yeah.
That was a key piece. I liked that. That was a nice.
The other part that I liked about Maggie was when we talked about describing high exo- and the council vision of the organization where she included not only council and city staff, but she, she pulled up all the residents and has something. I think that's huge for our, for our city specifically.
Yep.
To pull that out and have that knowledge, to include them in, in ensuring that the city of Montrose is truly what everybody wants.
And she's openly passionate about the immediate recovery.
Which is important.
Very important, yes.
Well.
So those are my concerns.
But the only concerns that I have really, and it's a big concern, is none of them are familiar with labor, the labor union. You know.
You, um, let me just comment on that. The, the position you're hiring for, the clerk treasurer, it would be unusual for a clerk treasurer to be involved in labor. Now, if it was a full administrator, you'd have candidates with that in their background because a lot of places there, I mean, they're the point for that when, when unions exist. So, yeah, I guess, I guess I can, I can understand the concern. I don't think you're going to see a lot of people with that specific background.
And I think that holds true across the board for all the candidates too, that they didn't have that strong negotiation experience. So it would mean that we would lean more heavily on legal counsel and where could provide that.
But they don't have to go union, correct?
No. No.
They haven't been, they never told them.
I haven't brought that up. I mean, I certainly will. They, I mean, any, I mean, you always have that opt-out, that fair share concept with, with unions. So, yeah, I, but no, I haven't brought that up, but I certainly would with the selected candidate to indicate that to them. Absolutely, at that point.
Because see, we have conflicting information on that.
I believe our contract states that person is a union.
Well, they're in, they, they are eligible for membership, but I believe Minnesota law says that you can, you can always do a fair share and opt-out.
Okay.
All of the unions, you still have to pay. You still have to pay like seventy-five percent of the dues, but you don't have to be a member. I believe that, that is uniform in law that that exists. So yes, they're covered by the contract, but any employee, if you're in the same union, you could do the same thing if you want it. So.
So there really is not a lot of negotiations, but there's only a couple. It's not like our public works or anything, so there really isn't any negotiation.
Yeah. Well, so where are you folks at? Sounds like we're leaning pretty strong to an individual here.
Sorry.
Yeah?
I had concerns with Lori, but I guess my biggest concern with her is her undecidedness in whether she's going to move up here or stay out.
That was, that was, I think, probably the big one for me too, is that, you know, she's like, well, I'll probably go home on the weekends. Well, if you're home on the weekend, or you're, I should say in Iowa, the weekends, like, how are you really going to be involved in the community? So, yeah, I mean, the reason why I liked her is because she has dealt with some situations that are similar to what we've dealt with. I think she has a good background. I think she has a strong backbone and she's very ethical. But that was one of my concerns. The other concern that I had with her was the dealing with the budget. You know, obviously we don't have unlimited funds almost, so I think keeping in with the budget would be.
Only in her end would be a challenge.
Yeah, would be a challenge, yeah. And, but I mean, those obviously are probably all the same concerns you guys had too, but, I mean, I don't know. But those were the reasons why I liked her, but those are huge issues. I mean, obviously that was one of the top priorities. We want someone who's going to be involved here, yeah.
I, I like that she had good experience with conflict in government.
Yes.
She had good experience with conflict. What I didn't like with the, she hated Facebook, which I think we need to be able to address our residences. You know, and I'm not a fan of Facebook, but I can use it because I need to. The other thing that really bothered me was commuting and not coming up here all the time.
Yeah.
But again, just, just to clarify, cannot require movement. You can't expect involvement, but that, from my standpoint, shows that there's not a commitment to joining the community.
Yes, yep, yeah.
And I'm not saying that you have to, I just always have to say it.
Yeah.
Well, and the other.
See, that's like with Audra there, she lives out in Buffalo, so she could really.
She didn't even want to apply for this position.
Yeah, she was hesitant, yeah.
Well, because of the supervisor.
And the other thing that I'm really concerned about with Lori is the budget issue. And that goes to the casino being there, that we've always had unlimited funds, we can bring them to anything we want to. The other piece was that we haven't grown for, what, ten to fifteen years, no development for ten to fifteen years in the community. That concerned me as well because one of the primary issues we've got is, is moving developers off the top to the center. So we've got smart growth bet. So that we can increase the tax base and do what we need to spread that tax base a little bit.
All right, any, I mean, where are we at now after talking about this a little more? Any, any additional comments, feelings, thoughts? Or are you, other, other things you want to talk about? And I don't want to push you to a decision, but I also, if you're ready.
We talked about Audra as well, as concerns and issues.
Sure, go ahead.
I liked, she was very personable, very personable. And wasn't afraid to jump up and shake hands, you know, get up at and meet you. But then when it came to how to express her assertiveness, there were never any real incidents that she expressed her assertiveness. And I got the impression based on the last few questions that everything had been passed on to someone else. That she was never the one that was really in charge of making that decision.
That'd be the same thing with Maggie though.
Yeah, she's. And I think Maggie's exactly because she's been in that position, but she's younger as well. Whereas Audra's got some time in positions where there should have been some situations where she'd have believed. And I didn't see any of that.
So the comments related to experience.
Experience, yeah.
Yeah.
Not age, no, not at all about age, it's about the experience piece of, and the fact that although she has a good deal of time in a position, there hasn't been times that she could point to where she was the assertive person or stuff that believed. And I think that's important.
But she wasn't scared to put her point of view in and not really back down.
I, I thought that was good, you know, I thought that.
Well, that's why I'm scared with Maggie there, I think she'd be intimidated too easily. Somebody will come in with a deep voice of, oh, you know. We got, we got more problems in the city.
But I think she addressed that as well, and she, you know, in fact, she has been front and center when somebody came in or pissed about whatever. And came in and said, hey, you know, here it is. And, and, you know, and she addressed that and said, hey, we need to talk about this call move, we can't drive it to the phone, we can find another time when we can. So she's, she's dealt with conflict.
And, and one of the things, if you do go with her, I mean, I think one of the things that you would probably want to do is talk about those situations and your collective expectations for how those are handled because I, I think it's important for the elective body to provide direction on that. Because a lot of times if people are left to their own, that's when they start to waffle. It's like, oh, what should I do with this? But if they know what your expectations are, then I think it's much easier for people to stand up in a situation and say, okay, here's how I'm going to move forward.
Is it possible to re-intervene?
Well, you can do, you can do whatever you want if you feel that additional information is needed, absolutely. I, I mean, I, I hear that come up once in a while and my challenge is always, well, what more do you need? Because I, I think you have to be, I mean, some people just want to put off the decision. Push back on that, but if you feel like there's additional information needed, that's, that's the point where you'd say, let's bring somebody back for an additional interview.
Well, maybe, maybe on the second interview, she wouldn't be so intimidated or so, maybe she'd be more assertive.
I think even though from the start of the interview to the end of the interview, she had changed.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's what happened with the department head interview as well. There's for sure.
Yeah, one thing she didn't smile very much, and that's something we really needed in, in the office, is people that smile. I mean, we got one person there now, but. She smiled quite a bit.
We were pretty serious in the interview as well.
Yeah, it was more of a formal interview, which was not.
But there were a couple of smiles that I got with all the candidates. But that's a good point. I mean, I, I think again, something where you want to say, yeah, you want to make sure that the people are, you know, being cordial. And yeah, I mean, they got the right attitude that you want. I mean, I can tell you that, you know, just, not that I'm trying to sway you in any, in any way, shape or form, but I've done work in Maplewood Park, I helped them with a project earlier this year. And I was always greeted extremely well by her, very positively. But again, I, I say that only with hesitancy because I'm not trying to say. But again, I say that only with hesitancy because I'm not trying to say, push you in any direction.
But would this be a fair question for you? If you were hiring someone for your company, which one of those three would you pick?
Well, I don't think that's a fair question. And I'll tell you why, because we'd never be hiring somebody in a position like this.
Yeah, but I'm saying, or, I mean, not necessarily your company, but if you were in this position.
Try not to answer that question.
What would you be looking at?
Well, I mean, I think I'm looking, I'd be looking for the same things you are. Communication skills, background and experience, how are they going to represent the city? How are they going to be involved in the city? How are they going to relate to the staff? You know, to me, these are, these are people jobs. The issues, there's always issues, there's nuts and bolts to deal with, but at the end of the day, you're dealing with people and that's where you have to focus your attention and your energy. So that's always what I look at from the side.
The sad part is the people are the boss.
Well, not, not, I mean, I always said that people, when I, when I was a county administrator, sixty-five thousand people, when somebody said, I'm your boss, I always said, you're, you're one of sixty-five thousand. It's these people that I report to, the five elected people that are my bosses. So, I mean, you're not every, everybody's not your boss, at least that's how I view it. Because I'd be, I would have been going in all kinds of crazy directions if I had done that, so. All right, folks, where are you at? Want to keep thinking? You want additional information? Do you want to ponder this until your next meeting?
Well, we can't make a decision anyway until the next meeting.
No, you could make a decision tonight if you want. It's post-meeting, post-meeting. You're, you're clear to do that if you want.
Why don't we go around one more time and give us your one, two, threes? Number one is.
I couldn't make this so hard.
Number one is Maggie. Number two is Audra and number three is Lori.
Numbers looking at me.
Moving on.
We're going top-wise again.
All right, I'm going, my number one would be Maggie as well. The other two, I don't have an opinion, so.
Julie, you had said earlier Maggie, so that means Lori is your turn.
Yeah, I'm still with that.
Mine would be Audra and Maggie.
I made it harder for you.
I know you did.
What are we still conflicted on?
Well, because I just, I think they both, I mean, I think both Audra and Maggie have, have such good things to offer just in different areas. I mean, I know that it shouldn't necessarily play a deciding factor in it, but the fact that Maggie is younger is a very good thing because I think she's able to identify with her demographic.
That can absolutely not be a deciding factor.
Exactly, well, yes, and I'm, I'm well aware of that.
But she's more able to relate with our millennial residents.
Yes, yes, that'd be a better way to put it. I mean, she has a good education. I, I mean, honestly, I would be okay with either one. I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to say, no, we can't pick her because of this or that. I mean, I'm definitely not would the other like that.
With Audra, um, her concern was, you know, the supervisory part of it and just having one person supervise. You know, so she's, even though she's only really responsible for the one, she still overlooks the whole office. So I think, I'm not sure if she would be comfortable with that. You know, that was kind of.
I think it would be, it would maybe almost conflict with Sean. Like she would push things off onto Sean when maybe she should be handling them. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Like, if she's supposed to be supervising, like, Anna, you know, if she.
Well, that would be Sean as well.
Well, but I'm saying, but like in the office, and Anna does something maybe she shouldn't have done. And it would be Audra's responsibility to say, hey, you shouldn't have done this or whatever. And then she would just push it to Sean to deal with it, which is more difficult because he wasn't physically there to maybe see the action. Maybe it was, you know, dealing with a customer or whatever.
But Sean won't have the role he's got now. When, when we hire somebody, he'll go back to his department.
But he would still be in charge of Anna. He would still be in charge of Anna.
She's supposed to work for him, yeah.
Yes, but that's what I'm saying is I think that, you know.
Which is a bad situation. I think we should move Anna back under the office staff.
That's the direction we would be going once this.
Yeah, but I mean, this year, Anna, Sean is her boss, that's, that's.
I think that's something you should talk more about. That is a little bit of a difficult situation.
At the start, you should certainly incident and that's over with now.
Yeah, I mean, because, like you said, she would be overseeing one employee, but technically she oversees an office. Sean's not really in the office. So she would have to be comfortable in representing Anna.
Which is what you're concerned with.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because, I mean, yeah, I think she could handle the one, but I would be wary about.
Well, she always seemed excited that it was just one.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, like not a whole lot of responsibility here, but, yeah.
Well, and as you, as you ponder the growth potential for the position, as you pointed out, right, that, you know, someday, maybe your perspective changes and this, you want this to grow into an administrator role. I mean, that's something I guess to keep in the back of your mind as well is where, you know, who's the.
Who did that change?
Well, who do you see as the right fit for that potential scenario?
But if it were to be the administrator role, I don't think.
She wouldn't apply.
She would, probably not based on her.
Right, yep. Whereas I still think.
And I think the leadership piece is extremely important, you know, who we put it after you in that position. I think that leadership piece is very important as we move forward because that person is going to take lead on all the administrative side of the house. And that needs to be something to be considered. And of the two, I think that Maggie fits that role better than just Audra. And there are weaknesses in both that I saw. One with Audra that maybe I'm not ready to step up to that position yet. And with Maggie, maybe I don't feel that I'm, you know, can be the one in charge because of my experience level. But I think that Maggie brings with her a good deal of experience in her education. And she's also got clerkship pending, so I think she's showing that she's moving in that direction. So her path is definitely on the upswing.
Well, and I think too, I mean, giving her even just a tiny bit of confidence would, like, she'll, you know, run, run with it, you know? Like, with, yeah, I mean, I understand with, like, with Audra, like, if you could give her confidence in the role, she probably still might not be comfortable with even one of the four.
I think with Maggie as well, I mean, she was an intern, you know? And then she was obviously doing something right to where they actually hired her on and kept her, you know, so. Even though she is young, you know.
She lacks experience, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Experience.
Yeah, I mean, even, even, actually, she has a lot of experience.
And she's got that initiative to go, go get it, so.
Yeah, and I honestly think that a lot of her experience is probably almost comparable to Audra's because Audra kind of took a backseat to a lot of things. I think it almost seems more by choice, whereas Maggie did it more because it was her position, like she, you know, but she wants to be.
Step drive.
Yeah.
In the middle of it.
And she stated there were like long periods of time where she's still in the administrative.
Yeah.
In fact, one of those was during that project that I was working on with them, administrator had a baby. So she was gone for a period of time, six weeks minimum, two months, three months.
I think she went for two months.
Yeah.
I think she is kind of reminds me a lot of, I don't know what I'm saying, of Anna, really. You know, she's out there to, to learn and advance and just pick it up, you know, again, so.
So are you ready to move forward with making a decision? Let me, let me frame the decision process for you before I ask that question. If you, if you were, if you were ready to make a decision, what, what I would encourage you to do is to say that the motion be something along the lines of to make an offer to whoever. And then, and then that comes back to the council for final action because there'd be some negotiation in there about salary and that kind of thing. And then that would come back before the full council at your next meeting for final action, if you will. That's, that's typically how the process would, would move forward. And I would gladly negotiate on your behalf. Uh, what I would suggest, if you wanted me to do that for you, is to give me, or have me report back to your personnel committee on that. Get some direction and feedback. Quite honestly, there's not that much to negotiate here. I mean, it's pretty straightforward what the benefit package is, it's pretty, you know, that, that sum is what it is. I think it comes down to.
I think we've got a calendar there as well.
You do, you do. So, I mean, I don't, I don't see that as being a long and complicated process, but, you know, you don't, you gotta engage them a little bit in it, so.
Did we ever check to see what they were impressing with me?
I do not have that information, but I'm, I'm certain in both cases, it's probably.
It's probably public now, I imagine.
Well, well, under, yeah, it's public now, it's probably well under what your range is. Because they're both in lesser type positions.
Well, she's, I mean, only an assistant to the minister there, that would be much.
Yeah.
And so we're looking at maybe the higher at the lower end of the range.
At the lower end, I would say, yes.
Yeah, at the low end with lack of experience.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't see you moving much past that.
And what about the temporary program? How long is, could it be that, six months probation period?
It was a year.
Probation is a year by the personnel's policy.
One-year personnel.
Yeah, and is this, so it's a union position, so it's not an ad-will position? It's, it's governed, yeah, so.
Even under the union agreement, a new hire or a change in position is a one-year.
One-year, yeah. So, yeah, so you have a year to evaluate that person's performance theoretically. Let them go. Exactly, exactly, minimize your, your risk, long-term risk.
Absolutely.
And, and if you, I mean, I always say, having a year is plenty. You know, if you don't know something in a year or something, you know, then you do know something and it's not working. So, you know what I mean? It should be clear well in advance of that.
Yeah, the only reason is so many things can change. I mean, you know, today, there's not much to do, but six months around might be a big building boom here.
Who knows, yeah, exactly. You know, and, and these folks here change something and that changes things as well. But at least in, you don't have an election this year, so you'd have, so it'd be a nice, you know, at least till the end of next year. Yeah, yeah, that is good. That's very good, actually.
Is there a consensus to move forward with the meeting?
I'm not stopping you from making the decision tonight.
Yeah.
I'm ready.
I'm ready to move forward, I guess.
Higher, I don't want to continue to delay before I go up with the same evolution on the line.
Are we in consensus as to who that will be?
Do we need a motion?
Well, my, my preference for you is to just do the motion, do the works that way, just in case.
I made the motion that we tender and offer for Maggie McCallum for the position of city clerk treasurer.
I will second. I'm second.
Michelle.
Michelle. Lloyd?
Aye.
Michelle, I'm a loser.
Aye.
I vote aye. Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries by vote.
So now we will offer the position and negotiate and then make a final decision at council? Is that correct?
Well, approve the action at the council, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, this is the word, this is the word.
You can have it. Yeah, you can have it.
So, yeah, I mean, basically, what I would envision coming before you at that meeting would be, here is, you know, Maggie McCallum, here is the recommended salary, and if there's any other negotiable items, which I'm not sure there are in this case, that would be your action at that point, would be to move forward on that. And again, I'd work with your personnel committee. I, I don't think this is going to be very tough. I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward, so I don't envision any roadblocks at all.
Don't we have to give a contact with her to see if she's starting waiting?
That's it.
Yeah, that's it.
So you're going to be.
Yeah, yeah. I'll start at the top and work my way down. You're such a guy. We need to fill out this.
But you have to make sure to cover up the year probation.
Yeah.
And also.
Yeah, yeah.
And the union.
I will mention that as well, absolutely. And I will also, I always call people, the other two, I will call them and thank them on your behalf as well, right away, so they know where they stand also. So I don't like leaving people just wondering what's going on out there.
Do we want to confirm that Maggie is accepting the position before we do that?
I think it's, I mean, I can always, I can always go back to somebody, but, you know, the confirmation might take days. I just like, I just like letting people know where they stand.
Probably get some new members.
I would have to, yeah, I would have to say that if Maggie declined it, in my opinion, would be repulsed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we'd go back to the drawing board in that case, yeah. All right. Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you on this so far. Well, not, no, no work to do, but I appreciate it.
For this one, you're going to do this one here?
Yeah, yeah. You can just leave that in your books. I mean, that's just background, that's just background information. Your, your action is your motion.
I'm going to say something else, but I did.
Yeah, don't worry. No, you gotta leave everything, you gotta leave everything to turn down. Like I said, your, your action is your motion. And I do need to take those, those binders with me as well.
Yeah, I'm going to do this still.
Okay, yeah, just think.
And if.
If you need something, you just.
Find out that I have to have one of the artists, then I'll go back from your something, but otherwise.
I can always, I have, I have the full record.
The section of the first ten.
Leave my scribbling in there. Yeah, well, actually, what I do is just, any notes are kept in there.